Being appointed the appointed hour, we call the meeting to order. To call the roll, please.
Bouchon.
Here.
Gillen.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Salter.
Here.
Would you please join, stand and join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. I will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen. Also, join me in the flags of the position, the pledge. My pledge is to give this to the flag of the United States of America, and to give it all that the world understands, why my nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item one, I need to pull item one D from the consent agenda. Does anyone else have anything that they would like pulled from?
Ma'am.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Shaw had requested another minor change in the agreement with Stewart and Clover, which is C five, which I don't have an objection to, and I can present to the commission as the second item.
Anything else?
One G.
Would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda, absent items C five, D, and G. Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries seven ayes. Item going in order, item one C five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Shaw sought further clarification from last week. I have made some amendments, but she has requested, and the firm is agreeable, to strike the language contained in paragraph four. Currently reads, "This contract shall automatically renew for a term of one year unless terminated by either party upon 60 days' written notice." That sentence would terminate there, striking by interliniation prior to June 30th of the agreement year, period, "And you shall at all times have the right to terminate our legal services in the event the firm breaches the terms of this engagement letter." That's the language that Commissioner Shaw had requested stricken from the agreement. Stewart and Clover has no objection to that amendment.
What paragraph are you talking about?
It's paragraph four, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, as you recall, the last meeting that we were at, that I'd asked for us, for the city to have the option to exercise a 60-day or 30-day at least written notification. And in here, Stewart and Clover had graciously placed the language, I believe, of the days of notice, but yet it still gave the impression with that language right after there, that there had to be a reason within that one-year period for the city to, if they chose, to change any of the agreement language or the agreement with Stewart and Clover, that they didn't have that option unless it was after that one-year period. So again, Shaw has been willing to change that language to allow the city to exercise that anytime within the one-year period.
Good. So what are you tracking in that option?
Yes, it would be the second sentence after it says 60 days' written notice, would be a period placed after notice, and then it would strike from the word prior all the way through to the end of the next sentence.
Is there a motion to approve with that language change?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harrod. Any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries seven aye. Item D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's simply just an error on the agenda. The actual firm that we would like to have our excess liability policy with is not Safety National Casualty Corporation, it's Midwest Employers. Just respectfully request that you make that motion for Midwest Employers as the substitute.
Oh, what changed, company?
This, the memo in your packet is correct, and this is, this was the, this is the lowest price as well.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion with the change to Midwest Employers, striking the language of Safety National Casualty Corporation.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries seven aye. Item G, approving memorandum of understanding with the City of Oklahoma City under the intergovernmental agreement for regional household hazardous waste collection and management project regarding hazardous waste disposal.
Having read through this memorandum, I believe I'd brought this query up in previous meetings when we renewed these agreements, and it's understood that this began in 2008 as a memorandum of understanding in a intergovernmental agreement. My concern is that the dates on it, on this, is showing 2016 and 2017 that we're approving, even though we're authorizing the approval for the 2018 and 19 year. So I would appreciate and suggest that in future agreements of this nature, that we have the correct date in these so that it will be reflected in the city's minutes.
Commissioner Shaw, we do not receive the memorandum from Oklahoma City until after they receive the letter from the mayor. They don't send it to us in advance, so we just attach the MOU that is on it this time for reference of what it will be when we do get it from Oklahoma City.
So we will get an updated contract that will have the correct dates, that will come back before the commission?
No, it won't come back. This is, this item is allowing you to sign the letter and allowing us to go, to continue the memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
I would suggest then in future meeting, future years, that you have that kind of language in there to educate the public as well as the city commission.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries seven aye. Item two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute per person limit and a 12-minute per subject limit. If there's anyone that would like to speak, approach the podium and tell us who you are and sign in.
Okay, so while she's signing in, I want to remind everybody that tonight from six to nine.
We know who you are, but I'm not sure that the wide-spread television audience knows who you are.
I'm just your local, I don't know, town crier saying good things about our community. So I want to-
You must bug off about protocols, though, you understand that?
Yes, I completely understand. Thank you for reminding me. Tonight from six until nine, so immediately following this commission meeting at the garage, is a benefit for cops and kids, and it's donate 10% of all proceeds of the funds goes to the cops and kids event. So if you haven't had dinner yet, I urge you to go, that is a worthwhile event.
I'm told there will be additional opportunities to do that.
I hope so. I hope so.
All right. Okay. I'm Lindsay Goodson from Blue Zones Project, Potawatomi County, and attacked by a fly, excuse me. So we have been working on the Food Policy Council, Potawatomi County Food Policy Council, getting all of the bones of the council set up, and have just completed meetings with the food policy expert Maggie Adamek, who came down from Minnesota and works with our project very closely in helping in all food policy areas. And I am happy to let you all know that the council has elected a leader from her colleagues, and Holly Gordon will be the cheerperson of the Food Policy Council.
Congratulations.
So we're looking forward to what this comprises, we're looking at access and equity of food systems in all of Potawatomi County. But we're really focusing first, kind of in Shawnee, but we have representation from McLeod. We're looking out into our neighboring communities to have representation on this food policy council, so that this truly reflects our county, and how do we address our food systems and access to healthy foods for all people in Potawatomi County. So we're looking forward to partnering with our folks and our friends in our neighboring communities, and looking towards our food policy experts in our area, because by gosh, we've got them, and they have something to say. And we're also partnering with the Citizen Potawatomi Nation, and we want to extend partnership with the Absentee Shawnee Tribe and the Kikapu Nation. So we really are reflecting the people who live in this county. So as we progress and we move forward in this first initial year, we'll be bringing ideas and suggestions and recommendations to this body for consideration.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Item three, swearing in of William Chance Allison as city treasurer. Judge, Chance, if you'd approach the podium.
All right, if you'll raise your hand and repeat that for me. I state your name.
I, William Chance Allison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties as treasurer.
My duties as treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Item four, consideration of approval of the budget for fiscal year 2018-19.
Thank you, Mayor, commission members. Items five and six are companion pieces with, excuse me, four and five, with four kind of being a general overview and an opportunity for you to ask any questions, and then number five is the actual resolution that's required by law, and then there's companion pieces on the municipal authority and the airport authority agendas as well. So what I'd like to do is just kind of briefly summarize the budget for the next fiscal year for all three budgets. Also like to welcome Chance to the city and-
You're not making him do this?
I'm not, no. This is his sixth day on the job. Also like to recognize Cindy Arnold, who's been instrumental as we've, as we've made this transition, and she's worked on this budget, but she obviously could not be with us this evening. So the budget hopefully is nothing too new to you, because we've got over it in previous meetings. Budget documented in your packet is about 50 pages in length. Hopefully you've at least had a chance to skim it. The budget should appear very similar to the current fiscal year. We're projecting relatively similar revenues. We are projecting a two-and-a-half percent increase in sales tax and overall revenue base of about $24.5 million in the general fund, so that is up slightly from the current fiscal year. There is a new state law that takes effect July 1st related to third-party internet transactions, which hopefully will result in some additional revenue for us. As you know, we've been fairly flat this year on sales tax, actually even slightly down based on our latest report. So we're hopeful that the next fiscal year is a bit more prosperous in those terms. When it comes to capital improvements, you'll note in the budget, there's about $2.6 million allocated. Over half of that, however, is allocated for debt service, as we continue to pay off three previous loans, and those, of course, are going for the fire station and fire truck improvements and enhancements. The 911 tower was constructed several years ago, and then the final payments on the Shawnee splash. So that doesn't leave a lot of, a lot of new capital money to go around, which of course is why you all decided to ask voters to consider a sales tax increase on June 26th, and if that passes, then of course we'll be coming back to you this fiscal year, this next fiscal year, and looking at timing and projects and priorities. So we look forward to that, that decision here next week. In terms of other major improvements that are identified in the budget, of course, we've carried over the planned improvements for Kikapu Street, so those remain in the budget, and we're just kind of awaiting the next phase with ODOT as we look to hopefully get that under construction in the next year. We've budgeted for continuation of our sidewalk and trail improvements, make sure we meet our grant obligations with the Avidis Foundation, and also our ongoing street maintenance responsibilities. When it comes to the Shawnee Municipal Authority, do have money budgeted for our pipe bursting activities, which have successfully reduced our maintenance and our line breaks. We are also anticipating at least the initial start of the plant improvements. Hopefully getting the engineering completed towards the end of this year into early 2019, and have that project out for bid, and so we'll be working with financial partners and with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board to look at financing options. But we do anticipate at least a $5 million infusion from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board as we start that project this coming fiscal year. Finally, then with the Shawnee Airport Authority budget, of course, the main project, there's just one main project, it is sizable, it's a tax upgrade project that you all awarded at your last meeting. We will, that will be under construction and will be completed this next fiscal year. So we look forward to that project and the opportunity to hopefully follow it up quickly with the T-Hainer project. So that's a really brief overview of the process. I will note, there is an error in the budget letter. If you added up the totals from the three different resolutions, that's a little bit over $72 million, the total overall budget, and the budget letter says 69 million, so I'll make that correction, and we'll publish a corrected budget letter and post that on the website with the adopted budget, but the resolutions themselves are accurate. With that, Mr. Mayor, if you have to answer any questions.
Any questions?
What's the change on the internet sales that's coming in July? Is it expected to happen, or it is?
Yeah, it was a House bill, I think 10-19, which passed in April, and it goes into effect July 1st. It affects third-party sellers, and so if you, for instance, if you order something right now on Amazon, if it's sold from Amazon, they charge tax, remit that to the city or to the state, and then it comes to the city. But if you, if you're an affiliate seller on Amazon, and you're selling a product that's on Amazon's website, but it's, but you're a company that's located out of state, then you are not remitting that tax to the state. And so that, my understanding of that bill is that it corrects that loophole. The state overall has projected a 1% increase in state sales tax as a result of this, of this increase, or this new law, and it was part of the package that was designed to fund some of the teacher increases, teacher salary increases, excuse me. Thanks.
Justin, I have several questions for you and Chance, or specifically probably for you and Chance. I'll grab you another day. I noticed, or I'm going to ask the question, this budget conforms to the Oklahoma Budget Act in all aspects, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Who will prioritize the projects on the capital improvement list?
Are you referring to the ones in the budget, ma'am?
Yes.
Or if the-
Yes.
Sure. So any capital project that's over $25,000 does have to be authorized by the commission. So that is your opportunity to allow us-
Have to be bid and offer.
To allow us to proceed or not, and so that is, but obviously, we won't want to surprise you and just put something on the agenda that we think might not be of high priority. So what I envision, ma'am, is that particularly with a new budget year, and with Chance being new to the city, particularly in light of the election next week, I would suggest that probably the city commission wants to have some type of retreat or workshop in the late summer or early fall, where we could prioritize things and review that in a closer detail. As the budget stands currently, there's not a lot of, not a lot of major projects, except the ones I mentioned already.
The reason for that question, Justin, is that the language that was in the, I guess, the June 28th, excuse me, the dated June 18th, indicated that the projects would be prioritized and then submitted to the city. So I was just wondering if you had a group that was going to assist you in prioritizing it, but if it's going to be a retreat with the upcoming commission and mayor and vice mayor, then that would certainly resolve that. My next question is, is the 2.5% merit increases going to be given at a certain time in the city's fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am. The merit increases are based on an employee's anniversary date, and so it's part of their annual evaluation, and so those would be metered out throughout the year based on that, on their start date with the city.
Okay. And I've noticed that perpetually, I guess, the license and permit fees appear to be rather low. Is there a thought in place, and I know that our city attorney has previously reviewed those, but these are low to me, and I've looked at some of the other cities, like-sized, for builders, plumbers, electricians, and business licenses, and if we're looking at trying to get additional revenue generated, I'd certainly like to suggest that area.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they can certainly afford it, what they charge. My plumber alone has probably got a small residence in Tahiti, so. But I'd like to make that suggestion. And I'd notice that the 75% of the budget is for salaries. Is that consistent with like-sized cities on that kind of amount in their city general fund being?
It's consistent with where we're at right now, having 3% allocated for, in terms of our sales tax rate. I would say that what most cities have done over the last 10 years is that they've increased their sales tax above 3%, and have dedicated those funds to capital improvements. And so I think you would find cities that are better capitalized probably have a lower percentage.
Okay. And I appreciate that you indicated that there was the correction in the budget and the alignment with the narrative, because I had a number of areas that wasn't matching up, and I had a whole list I was going to go through and ask that question. I did notice one in particular, I do think that may need your attention, or HR's attention, and that is the area of line item 601, the workers' compensation area, because I know you're bringing forward a fund balance of $245,639 from our current fiscal year into the new fiscal year, which makes it 906, yet your language in your narrative clearly indicates that you won't need more than $660,500. And I do know that you have the stop-loss policy that you just got approved, but that was only for $89,000. So that still leaves a difference of about $160,000 between what you're asking for and what you're apparently saying you need.
Yes, ma'am. I'll make that correction in the letter.
That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Would entertain a motion to approve the budget?
I think you could actually defer, just move on to the next item, ma'am, and that will be the action item.
Okay. Item five, consideration of a resolution adopting the budget for the City of Shawnee for the period of July 1st, 2018 through July 30th, June 30th, 2019, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of the budget.
I would like to make that motion with the understanding that the corrections in the budget are going to align with the narrative that Justin just indicated would occur, and that there will be the review of the workers' compensation.
Motion by Commissioner Shaw, is there a second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution approving and adopting the budget for the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma for the period July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of said budget.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries seven ayes. Item six, consideration of possible action to cancel the July 2nd, 2018 city commission meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six, as we have, I think, the previous three years, we have worked hard to kind of cluster everything, this meeting and the previous meetings, so that we make available the option to cancel. The first meeting in July, since it typically falls around the 5th of July holiday, and many of you are gone or wish to be, so I believe we can cancel this meeting and without adverse impact to operations.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Questions, suggestions?
What day is the, the fourth camp in the middle of August?
It's on Wednesday.
It's on a Wednesday this year.
Yeah. Is that, is that, is it going to be closed on the fourth?
Yes, sir.
I would hate to miss a meeting, but if it's for you, I'd be willing to.
We'll give you a key.
I might do. Do I?
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to cancel. Moved, second by Commissioner Gillen. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Notion carries seven aye. Item seven, public hearing and consideration ordinance to rezone property located at 4900 North Harrison. The applicant has withdrawn the application, so we will dispense with item seven. Item eight, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 3954 North Kickapoo Avenue from C2 Suburban Office Commercial District to PUD Plan Unit Development, case number PO818. Applicant Kirk Kalies deferred by Planning Commission to June 6, 2018, deferred from May 7, 2018 city commission meeting. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, the applicant in this case came forward with a concept for a, really a five-lot master plan shopping center-type district. Problem is, with these, with these five lots, we have three different ownerships, so in order to kind of do this properly, what we've, the approach that staff recommended and what we're following today is the- and what we're following today, is the subject two lots will be rezoned from C2 to a planned unit development. That'll have controlling language really for all five lots. In order to ensure that all requirements are met, we have also, as part of our exhibits here, had property owner associations and agreements established between all property owners, mostly for the need of shared access, shared infrastructure, and, and shared parking that is consistent throughout the entire site. So, staff has reviewed this particular case. If I haven't mentioned already, we're talking Kickapoo Street just south of 45th on the west side. So far, two of these strip centers have been developed, one of which has the Heavenly Grounds Coffee Shop, if you know where that's at by chance. They're in the middle of construction of the southern lot, which would be Lot 4, College Edition. So, really, the focus will be the next, next three lots going north, including these, these two sites here. Staff has listed five general conditions here, most of which refer to making sure that all these shared agreements are in place prior to any construction, and all of these shared facilities are in place prior to any certificates of occupancy for these particular structures. So, with that being said, staff has, staff recommends approval with the five listed conditions.
Any questions?
I do appreciate the fact that we're looking to access, because for traffic reasons and internal connections, which would reduce that from like five to perhaps three. That's always good when we can do that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That was, that was a big, big focus on this particular project. We like to, and we have planned unit developments, really work with the developer and make sure that we're making the safest arrangement for, for not only citizens, but the developer themselves. And in this particular case, each lot is allowed access upon Kickapoo Street, but part of that negotiation was having three acts, three access drives along Kickapoo and one one-way access off of Penn Street that takes traffic only south, so as not to put any further burden upon the residential road, Penny, Penny Street.
Justin, I do have a couple of questions. One is, were there any letters of concern expressed?
Thank you.
Given?
No letters. We had, we had one person attend Planning Commission in May that mentioned concern, has it related to Penny Street and the access upon, upon Kickapoo? And we did defer this item in May. So, it was a very original plan that, that was, that was shown at that time. And since then, we incorporated the, the southbound only access along Penny Street to make sure that we didn't have any, any particular issues along Penny Street. Because if you look at it, especially on the map, Penny Street is a major residential collector, taking smoking oaks to the west to Kickapoo Street. So, that was, again, part of that negotiation was making sure we weren't having traffic going on to Penny Street.
So, this resident, they get her request considered, and the Planning Commission did resolve it?
Correct.
Okay. I guess my other question on this would be, was, I saw that Justin had attended that, and I'm glad that you did. Justin one, Justin two.
Right.
Justin, Justin, J and J. And I guess my concern would be that I noticed there was a lot of traffic concerns, and you just mentioned them, and our City Commission just mentioned that. And one of the commissioners, Planning Commissioners, said it's a law enforcement issues, and I would have to disagree with that. I know that it needs signage there, and that there needs to be some changes made on that, and it sounds like you're, you're working on that. But I'd also like to suggest that that be forwarded to our Traffic Commission and our Planning Commission, not be our Traffic Commission, is my suggestion. And I respectfully disagree with that Planning Commissioner who said it's a law enforcement issue. I believe it's a Traffic Commission issue.
I'll, I'll mention one more thing. An additional discussion point was also making sure that, this is something staff looked in, looked into specifically, making sure that the central access point to this particular shopping center lines up appropriately across the street with Kendale Drive, in the case that in the future, we do decide to have some kind of signalization or, or other traffic calming measure. So, applicant's been very, very good to work with, and they're, they're willing to make any of those changes that staff, staff has added.
I did see that, and I'm certainly glad the planner and the developer all worked with that community to resolve that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had one concern that I had discussed with Justin, and it's 5.0, if you want to pull it up on your computer there, but I'm concerned with the stormwater runoff, because it says, the last line, that the flow from the west side will convey down Penny Street until it reaches tributary three at Rock Creek. The water will never make it that far, because there's about a 25% grade on Penny Street going west that maximizes at Pottinger, which is two blocks.
Sure.
And I'm very concerned that stormwater is going to collect at Blaine and Penny, and there's not any curbs in through there, because the overlay of Penny Street once or twice has alleviated the curbs. And I think that the water coming off of the, the parking lots and everything and going west is going to create a problem.
Thank you, Commissioner. To best answer your question, 5.0 is, is, and this is Exhibit 1, Section, Section 5, physical characteristics. The intent of this particular section is to describe the pre-development drainage pattern, basically to say that lots run north to south, that essentially a ridge is down the middle with water on the west side conveying, as, as Commissioner Salter mentions, westbound, whereas the east side going into the Kickapoo Street Underground Storm Sewer. What I would also, what I would like to add to that is that Section, Section 18 of the same exhibit details that a underground storm sewer system will be part of this particular project. This early in the process, when we're at the planned unit development phase, we do not have the full, the full details and the full plans, but those will be asked for and received prior to any construction. We'll be sure that the city engineer has a chance to look at that and that there's no issues as far as the detention of the water and the release of the water. Mentioned in 18, as well, is the fact that there's a couple options that they can, they can go with. One would be to, rather than release onto Penny Street, would be to connect to the storm sewer along Kickapoo Street. So, with those options, staff feels pretty safe about making sure the process goes downright. But I've, I've made a note, and I'll definitely keep that in mind.
Ben, that's Section 18.0, cap 6.
Yes. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the project? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the project? Public hearing is closed. Would entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to make the motion to accept with the five general conditions and with the concern in regard to the stormwater runoff being considered by the Planning Commission.
Moved by Commissioner Charles, or second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salter. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to WIT, Lots 7 and 8, Block 1, College View Edition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, from zoning classification C2 Suburban Office Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries seven aye. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, majority of my time in the last month has been spent on public education efforts related to the special election and the four propositions. I did want to update you on some resolutions of support that were received on June 13th. Shawnee Forward and Shawnee Economic Development Foundation and Separate Actions passed resolutions of support for Proposition Number 4. And this morning, Potawatomi County Commissioners passed a similar resolution as well. Those are three resolutions of support that have been issued. The open house that we held for public safety was lightly attended, but I still think it was a good thing that we did. We did have a few folks come out and tour the facilities, and so, we appreciate those of you that came out, saw several Commissioners as, as well. There are not really any more public events planned, so just encourage everyone to get out and, and vote next Tuesday. Couple other project updates. The Santa Fe Depot Parking Lot is nearing completion. If you haven't had an opportunity to drive by there, please do. It's very attractive with the brick that has now been set in place. I believe that project will wrap up here, and just, just hopefully just a few more working days. Fire Station Number 2, continue to make good progress now. Lots of, lots of individuals and contractors on, on site every day. Believe that project will be completed, at least substantially completed in July. It will take the fire department a little bit of time to actually physically move in, because there'll be some other miscellaneous equipment that will be installed and just some preparations. So, but we do hope to have that staff late summer, or probably late summer with actual personnel. And lastly, I wanted to update you all on pool attendance, since we've been open now for about a month, and I'm pleased to report that this is our, been, really been our best year yet. We've been averaging about, just a little over 500 visitors per day. We have 352 season pass holders, which is, our goal's been just to hit 300, and we've had trouble doing that the previous years, and already we're at 350 this season. And our opening day weekend had 1,831 guests, which is 300 more than last year's opening weekend. So, really, really continue to see a lot of usage on that facility, and just when you think it plateaus, we have our, our, looks like our best year yet. So, appreciate everyone's support for that, for that project. Concludes my summary. Be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
Commissioner comments?
Mr. Erickson touched on it a little bit. I want to be ready, don't forget to vote the week from tomorrow. A lot of issues and a lot of seats up for grabs. I also want to thank Chief Tisher. I didn't know that he wasn't going to be here. Last week, I went for a tour, a one-on-one tour. He, he walked me through it. It was very informative, and I'm, I'm real excited about what's going on over there. And I want to reiterate about the donation that we, we had received. I'd like to thank that individual for that donation in order to get the extractor for the firefighter gear. That was crucial, and it's a lot of help. One last thing, I'd like to thank Shawnee Police Department. I was out of town this week. My alarm went off at my house, and they, their arrival time was less than eight minutes. I consequently found out my brother-in-law had set it off, but he neglected to call me and let me know. But I'd like to give a big shout out to the entire department for the expeditious retrieval on that, the response.
My turn?
Please.
Sometime back, I, I come back, this is my second tour, obviously, and this chair I was sitting in was really creaky. And I had a gentleman sitting next to me.
You sure it was the chair?
I checked his chair out before he got here one day, and smooth as silk, there wasn't a sound coming out of it. So, surreptitiously, I swapped chairs. I'm not sure he knew it. He never said much about it, but I have a feeling maybe I listened to this. But no, seriously, though, I, I had an opportunity to speak to a group of conservative people, Republican Party, actually, and about the tax, have sent what we're looking at. And I first checked the distance to the door and see who would be between me and that distance before I went up there. I also predicated this by saying that I was not looking to run again ever for this job, and secondly, that it wasn't very often that City Commissioners are recalled. So, with that in mind, I went ahead and promoted my ideas that would, I hope, have some effect on them, which it seemed to. I got a little emotional probably at times, and sort of about looking back at the times that we wanted to do these things, back in 92 to 95 to 96, 97, all the different things that are still sitting there looking at us, that were sitting on the table then, that we never had action on. There's so many things here that are cleanup, that just badly need to be done. Roots on places, I'd love to see that we could really clean up Santa Fe down here, and actually clean it without the idea that it's going to be messed up again with leaking water and everything with the roof. We'd like to clean these stuff. You know, we are kind of what we do, and what we demand of ourselves, as far as even cleanup and looking ahead to what we have, the future. These things will last a long, long time. Most of them are things that will, will look 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and be glad we did them at some point. Now, I hate the idea of taxes, but I had to say honestly that I'm for this tax. And I, I think that the things we've lined out, and which is so much that this will do over a period of time, I, I have to say, well, paying it off in 10 years is nothing, it sounds like, let's say, a real opportunity at this point in time. But the fact are, I think it's worth what we're asking to do. The police department, as I said, we've kind of got them as, as, I usually, I think I mentioned before, it's like Phantom of the Opera. If you've seen the movie picture, you get the caverns underneath, and guys rowing this boat and everything, and all this. Up on top is the Opera House, right? But it's kind of like what we got here. We've had this forever. We tried to find things, places to put the police department 20 years ago. We got an opportunity now, a great deal. I'd like to see it done. I'd like to see it done right, with enough to go ahead and take care of the things to produce the, the building and the opportunity, the spaces that would really make a difference for us. So, anyway, I just had an opportunity. I thought I'd take that chance, and they didn't kick me out, and when I finished my talk, there's one thing that I admitted. I just said, "Thanks for your interest," and I sat down. I never asked, I said, "Any questions?" No, I never went that far. But they accepted that as, they accepted that as a fee in ease on the whole situation, and I was gratified to be able to do that. So, let's hope we do get it. I'm very much for it. That's it.
I can't match that.
You can't? I wouldn't want you to.
I would like to compliment Justin, if we, I've heard the presentation two, three times, and he does an excellent job presenting the information on the questions and also on the tax. So, I, like I say, it does, it has done a very good job, and I appreciate your extra work there. I would like to mention that the Knights Auto Show is Saturday out at the Boy Scout Park, so come out and hey the day and look at the, look at the cars. That's all I have.
Ron did a pretty good job covering the, the election for us. That's good. Absolutely. Everyone be sure and get out and vote, and don't forget tonight, if you're hungry, when this meeting's over, till nine o'clock at the garage, 10% of the proceeds go to cops and kids, which is going to be a great, another great event this year.
Okay. Well, I'm certainly thrilled that the pool is so well-attended, Justin, and all the funds that the city's put into it has become very meaningful to the community. In the upcoming fiscal year, Chance, my suggestion is to keep working with Justin and finding grants and alternative revenue sources, and, and look at intergovernmental agreements. Justin, I can't begin to, to say that enough, intergovernmental agreements. If you can work with local government entities such as tribes, I would strongly suggest that. And that may be difficult at times, because leadership and members or tribal citizens aren't necessarily of the same opinion on issues. And just as an FYI, now is an ideal time with tribes, as they just had their tribal elections, many of them do in June, and new leadership has new thinking, not in all cases, but in many. And I'm so thankful for all the new businesses that we've got that's here in the city of Shawnee, and the new development that we're seeing out there, the Blue Zones. I'm always so happy that you're here and that you're, you're working to make changes in the community. And Holly, I would make the same suggestion. And Holly, I would make the same suggestion that I just made to Justin. Reach out to the tribes that are both non-indigenous and indigenous in this community, and they can help you make that difference. Also, I'd like to say one final thing, and that is to be mindful of the elders and the homeless in this heat. If you're out there and you're carrying an extra bottle of water and you see them on the corner, give it to them. It's hot. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, welcome to Chance, welcome board.
Thank you.
And the election's been mentioned, but the thing we haven't talked about is early voting Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at the Election Board on Ackley Road. So you can go out there, I think, until 6:00 PM and early vote, and take somebody with you. So.
Thank you, Ben. I would certainly echo Commissioner Shaw's comments about working with our stakeholders, no matter where they are, whether they're tribal, whether they're other organizations within the community, the school system. It's just, we can't always reach agreement, but we can always talk and be civil and have the greater good in mind. I, too, would like to welcome Chance. I think you'll do really good. In terms of the election, a couple of things. I was actually the first person that was behind the bars in the police department, and that's the reason. The reason is because I worked for Roy Waller when we poured the floor down there around the bars. This was in 1971. So it's been down there a long time, and this election is going to allow us to do some things with it. We're not a lot different than any other business. Growth stresses capital, and as we have to push our infrastructure out, those, we incur lots of capital dollars when we start doing that. So it's not only about the nice things that we want to do inside the community, it's laying the groundwork for that growth, which we feel like will help us up our game in terms of the sales tax receipts. And just as an aside, if we're only up 1% next year, I'm going to be very disappointed. Those are my comments, and we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Gillum. Are there any further discussion? Call a question, please. Motion carries seven zero. Item two, consideration of approval of the Shawnee Airport Authority budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Justin went through these items. If there are any questions that didn't get asked at that time, now would be the time.
Let me just chime in, too, Mayor, and just apologize. We probably could have combined items two and three, and so you'll see two agenda items from each three of these agendas, but really, the approval comes under the adoption of the resolution. So you can dispense with the actual action item until number three.
Item three, consideration of resolution of adopting the budget for Shawnee Airport Authority for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of the budget.
Go ahead.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to adopt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution approving and adopting the budget for Shawnee Airport Authority, Oklahoma for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of said budget.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries seven ayes. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. And again, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, for second. Second by Commissioner Harrod. Call a question. Motion carries seven aye. Items two and three, we dispensed with two. Item three, consideration of resolution adopting the budget for Shawnee Municipal Authority for a period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of the budget. Are there any additional questions that were not asked previously? Would entertain. Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Bishong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution approving and adopting the budget for Shawnee Municipal Authority, Oklahoma for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Finding all things requisite and necessary have been done in preparation and presentation of said budget.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries seven aye. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir, there is none.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.
I switched, I switched on Wi-Fi to Joe Hogg. It's a lot faster than the city.
It's good, cheaper, too.
I didn't say so, but thanks. Appreciate you being aboard.
I can usually pull on my office, but I couldn't.
You were talking to Mr. I didn't hear.
I had an air of Wi-Fi.